Saint Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 30th, 2023. We will begin with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and we will begin with the superintendent and student board member reports.
Good evening, all. It is August 30th. We are officially done with six days of the 180 we gathered, so 174 more to go. First day of school visits, we continue the tradition that I think we're getting close to, I think this was the 16th or 17th year that we've done this? We started it in like 2007, I think. Maybe it's 2006.
We actually did it before that.
Did we do it even before that?
We rode buses.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, we did.
There's always next year. We all, each board member was accompanied by a staff member and toured every single school, got visited by a very important person on the first day of school. I know that Mrs. Bailey and I, we made a point of popping in and seeing all of our brand-new teachers, teachers who might not be new to teaching but are new to us, and we wanted to reinforce and welcome, reinforce their great decision to join us and make sure that they knew that we knew how important they are. And we, there's no other place like Saint Mary's County, and so if you're thinking of pursuing an interest in the educational field or supporting services of education, we're right here to see it. The pictures there are all of us going out and seeing everything, Mr. Davis, Mrs. Washington, Mrs. Andrews, Mrs. Allen, is that you kind of in the corner there with Principal Copsy? And then, of course, Mrs. Bailey and I at White Marsh, we got to sit in those really little seats.
It was their Starbucks corner.
On the floor, and then we got, we read some books, and that was really cute. Shout-out to Ms. Mary Ann Williams, who followed Mrs. Bailey and me around to several schools, trying desperately to get a picture of me that could be used later on to show that, like, I actually talk to kids. There are so many pictures where everybody is beautiful, it's a gorgeously composed picture, except for the central subject. She is a saint. She is a saint. And thank God, these are all digital, because if this was film, I do not photograph all. So, employment opportunities, business education, we got three opportunities for that. Elementary education, you want to work with younger kids? We've still got two chances. One, English teacher, and actually, I think now that might be two English teachers, depending upon how the rest of this morning, this evening goes. One, health P.E. Four instructional resource, two in mathematics, four in science, one in social studies, four special ed, speech pathologists, social workers, school psychologists, and counselors. If you want to work directly with children, you have a passion, we want to work with you. So, a bachelor's degree gets you in the door and unlocks this great opportunity for professional development, to grow into that role. So, please, if you know, if you're interested, or you know anybody who might be interested, we are still seeking some fantastic candidates. For support, we need accountants, building service workers, bus drivers, career advisors, family service providers, food service providers, maintenance workers, media clerks, paraeducators, programmer analysts, purchasing specialists, secretarial staff, substitutes, many. And then, we still have three teacher-apprentice positions open for people who are just starting their journey to become a teacher. We have a great role for you. So, please, don't worry, even though we started our story of 23, 24, there's still room for you to hop into the pages of our book. So, come to our site, www.smcps.org, hit the big red button, and just look at all the opportunities that you have to join us. Again, we are three days in this week, six days in overall. September starts on Friday, and then we have a three-day week, and that's a great thing. And then, we'll come back in, we have a board, we have three board meetings. We have an AM board meeting on the 13th, a PM board meeting on the 27th. On the 22nd is the fair day, so there's no school for students, but there is work for staff, professional development. The 21st is a traditional two-hour early dismissal day. I will tell you that the attendance so far for the first six days of school is great. We really tried to put out a message, we asked principals to put out that message and teachers to put out that message, that we can't get to the best version of you without you being with us every single day. So, we've had, we've had great attendance in the first several days, so, good stuff. Dr. Marr has a whole presentation, so I'm not going to step on any of his stuff. Instead, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lillian Kibler, our student member of the board. Ms. Kibler.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. So, you probably see on your screen right now this idea of SNCPS CARE. It's very catchy, it's this new idea that we have, and it means connected, accountable, resilient, and excited to learn. This will be our mantra this year, as Dr. Smith and I trek across the county, visiting our elementary schools and our middle schools, and seeing our high schools and our superintendent student leadership advisory council meetings. So, this platform is how we'll aim to continue fostering positive and productive environments in the classroom this year, which, of course, is a major part of my goal for the term. With this concept, our entire county will be, number one, connected, which means being informed and empathetic across all ages and between administrations and classrooms. We will also be, number two, accountable, which will help us be responsive to all student and staff needs and be diligent when it comes to fulfilling our job roles. We will be, number three, resilient, which will have us always coming back swinging with positive outlooks. And finally, number four, quite simply, excited to learn. So, I know it can be a little overwhelming sometimes coming back into school, particularly on the first day, but we must remember that while school is absolutely a right, it is too often a privilege, and thus, we must be excited and we must excitedly take advantage of school as the eye-opening resource that it is and that we are so lucky to have. So, overall, all of this is to say that SNCPS cares about education, cares about our students, and cares about you. So, to dive a little more on this topic, we have a great video to share with you guys, but before we watch it, I'd like to give a big thank you to our TV, video, and production friends at the Forest Career and Tech Center, who helped put it all together, which would include Amy, Aiden, Mrs. Williams, and of course, Dr. Marr. So, without further ado, here's the video.
Maybe? Let's try again.
Technical difficulties?
It was working before, it's square.
Hey, guys, and welcome back to Be Your Best You, the series where we give you all the tips and tricks to help you be best prepared for the new school year. My name is Lillian Kibler, and I am the student member of the Board of Education for Saint Mary's County Public Schools. That means that I represent all 17,000-plus kids in Saint Mary's County on our Board of Education. It also means that I know a lot about student activity and engagement. As we start the new school year, you want to put your best foot forward, get a good night's sleep, and get to know your new school, or your new area, in the new year. You want to meet all of your new teachers, memorize your schedule, and don't be afraid to be friendly with your new classmates during lunch or joining clubs. And this year, SNCPS is also trying to help you, because SNCPS cares. That means that we are connected, accountable, resilient, and excited to learn. Never be afraid to reach out and ask for any questions or for any help. Follow some more tips and tricks on how to be your best you. Have a great school year.
Yay!
How to open your car door when you're trapped underwater?
In case you needed to know, if you're in Florida.
You're as tall as the tree.
It's very, it's very good stuff. We've been talking with, as we went and visited elementary schools, they were reflecting on last year's visit with Monasa Swara, the last year's student member of the board, and talking with all the fifth graders, and how much the fifth graders really then carried that forward. One of the things that Lillian will be sharing when we talk with the fifth graders is her dedicated student member of the board email address, and so the kids afterwards, if they have questions, or comments, or thoughts, sharing that with their student member of the board, recognizing the power of their own individual voices. And I know that Monasa got a lot of really great emails from fifth-grade kids from across the county, and what happened? If Monasa knew the answer, she could send it right back, but if she didn't, then she would reach out to us, and we would gather the information and send that back to the school. It was really a great, a great loop, so.
It's keeping us all connected and accountable.
That's it, connected, accountable, but also resilient and excited to learn. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. No recognitions or public hearing? I am guessing we have public comment? Is that the only one?
Yes.
All right. You know the drill.
Yep.
Put on policies and issues, listen and consider not to comment. Please don't use this for negative comments or criticisms. Keep in mind that we are also the appellate body for any appeals. You've got three minutes. There you go.
All right. Thank you. Sarah Penrod, president of East Mick, and it is bargaining season, and I'm here because I wanted to share some of the things that we've been doing at East Mick to prepare for this upcoming bargaining season. So, our, we have multiple committees and subcommittees and joint committees that have been running all summer long, where we've been getting a lot of really creative ideas on how to use the blueprint language to really push us forward as a county and ahead of all of the other ones. We have held multiple listening sessions for groups and individuals, where people were able to come and share their ideas of how, you know, they would like to see some improvements being made, or just in general, like, what could be added to it that we don't already have, and really great ideas there, excited for those. We also do have very, very soon coming out a, our traditional survey, where we send all members, and everybody will have an opportunity to just provide us feedback on their working conditions, and really, anything involved in the negotiated agreement. So, I've worked with Dr. Marr on the Career Ladder Joint Subcommittee, working together to come up with some ideas on how the new career ladder for teachers and that pay scale will work. So, I am very hopeful that this upcoming, the next few months, that we're going to be really productive and really come up with a great negotiated agreement at the end. I think both sides are well-prepared, and we know so much about the blueprint, we've analyzed every single word in it, and we know what we have to do to take that language and apply to Saint Mary's County to make us better than all the others, because when it comes down to it, what we need to do is make sure that we recruit and retain the best and the brightest educators and support professionals here. They need to come to Saint Mary's and nowhere else, right? All right, so, that's all for me tonight. Less than three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Again, that does tie into why we're doing all of our visits, we're going out and seeing our new teachers, and Dr. Marr and Heather Husk will be visiting throughout the year. We do like individual sessions with new staff from each one of the schools as well, because we really do, we have to make people fall in love with Saint Mary's County, so they stay with us for 10, 15, 20, 30, 35, 40 years.
Okay. Let's see. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for August 16th, 2023, personnel, teachers, personnel, administrative, and supervisory. 2023 Chevy Malibu Purchase Fitzgerald Frederick Fire Alarm Service at Hollywood Elementary School, Department of Maintenance, and 2023 Ford Transit Cargo Van T250 Purchase, Department of Maintenance. So, with that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We have one action item tonight with Dr. Kelly Hall on the pre-kindergarten capacity grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is always the hardest part. There it is. Thank you. Okay. Hardest part's over. All right. I'm here to discuss the pre-kindergarten capacity building grant with you and request your approval. So, just a little history, our pre-kindergarten applications are surging with income-eligible children. The application increase with students who are income-eligible, up to 300% of the federal poverty level, we're seeing a big increase. Some data from the time that we submitted this, so it's continued to rise. We have 798 applications to date, we have 520 spaces, we've had 913 registration inquiries to date, phone calls, emails requiring a response, and every one of those people have gotten a response. Mrs. Woodley doesn't want me to say 24 hours, but most of the time, it is 24 hours, if not 48. So, as an example of what that surge is looking like, Park Hall currently has 20 seats. They have, at the time of this, 38 students that are income-eligible and zoned for Park Hall, so that's a whole 'nother class. Lexington Park is an example, had 40 spaces to start, so they had more classes, given their poverty and their needs, and at the time of this, it was 48. We have six or seven more that are zoned for Lexington Park. So, MSD-E, I called them and said, hey, do you have any competitive opportunities? And so, you know, I reached out, and they said, as a matter of fact, we do, it hasn't been released yet, we have something called Pre-K Capacity Building Grant, and it's forthcoming. So, with our historical application and enrollment trends, because we look from year to year, we are confident that additional income-eligible children are going to apply, and we're already seeing that from the time I submitted this presentation to now. So, the blueprint criteria for pre-kindergarten admission, just as a reminder, right now, the only criteria in the blueprint that generates funding is if a child is income-eligible, and that means under 300% of the federal poverty level. Our official enrollment from September 30th will generate the funding for the following school year. So, for pre-kindergarten, again, only children up to 300% are blueprint-eligible, with the exception of specific competitive grants that have additional parameters. The Pre-K Capacity Grant has those parameters. It allows for students with disabilities and English learners regardless of their income. Just the chart, we've shared it before, but we think it's helpful for people to see. You see on the left side, the family size, and we're looking at that blue column all the way over to the right, that is 300% of the federal poverty level, and families have to verify their income. So, a little bit about the Pre-K Capacity Building Grant. Grant proposals were being accepted on a rolling basis. So, the eligibility criteria with this grant, the children that were income-eligible up to 300%, students with disabilities, and English-language learners regardless of their income. What allowable costs could be the classroom staffing salaries for the teachers and the paraeducators, classroom materials, including their resting mats that they use to take a nap, student snacks, the center equipment, the sand table, the little kitchen set, all of that. And what we know from what our parents told us last year in a number of stakeholder meetings we have, families want their children in their home schools, principals want the children in their home schools, and transportation is much more efficient and less costly if children are in their home schools. So, our goal at that moment was to beat the clock, if it was going to be accepted on a rolling basis. So, the Pre-K expansion, Pre-K Capacity Grant was submitted within days of the release, and I just have to give a shout-out to my team, Christian Shields, Charlotteis Woodley, Sarah Wren, Martina Green, because I'm like, guys are beating the clock.
Without a doubt.
And they really rose to the occasion, I cannot thank them enough. But what that means for Park Hall is that they will get an additional classroom, and they have identified a room in the building with a bathroom that could be used for that purpose. Lexington Park had 40, they would get another class, so they would have 60 spaces, they've identified a room, that was a very good question. They've identified a room with a bathroom, and Greenview Knowles has 20 students, but they're starting, again, they're enrolling or applying, and they're eligible, that would take them to 40. And in Greenview Knowles, they have a new, relatively new, very modernized, relocatable unit, it has a bathroom for the students, and it's connected to the school by a boardwalk. And given that there's a teacher and two paras in every classroom, if a child needs to go to the nurse, there's an adult to take them and escort them back. So, we also put into our grant the salaries for the teachers and the paraeducators, the classroom startup, the materials, the centers, the technology, and their mats to take a nap. So, we won. We won. So, we were awarded the full request for three classrooms and 60 new pre-kindergarten spaces, now with any competitive grant. There are monitoring expectations, there are reports and submissions, and there are site visits from MSD-E. But my staff feel like we can manage that, we've managed that before, so, you know, we said, okay, you know, it's 60 more spaces for children. So, the grant was awarded on August 17th, and just as kind of an example of how fast we moved, the grant is still open, they're still accepting applications until September 15th. The grant period is backdated to August 1 through June 30th, and then, there are budget increases that would be necessary by category, and so, for the administrative costs, you see 82, 25 instructional salaries, just shy of $300,000, materials of instruction, 99, 817, special education, 1,050, fixed charges, 198, 508, grand total, $600,000. So, we are requesting that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and certainly, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have no questions, but this looks like a great opportunity to help welcome all the new kids that we are quickly getting in Saint Mary's County, we're growing so exponentially, so this looks like a great way to welcome them.
Well, thank you.
My understanding from the data, that children in Pre-K excel and do better in reading as they go up the ranks. If that's true, I just was curious if a parent had a child that didn't fall into that 300% range, in other words, you had the capacity, could a parent with a child that didn't fall in the poverty level get enrollment?
So.
Hypothetically.
And that's an excellent question. So, what we do is we serve all the income-eligible children, and remember, if a child comes in at 185%, the system is obligated to serve them, no matter when they come in, by Maryland law. But, to your point, after September 30th, when we have established the fund generators, if we have any capacity left, we have 250 children on a waiting list, we'll go right in rank order, October 1, and offer them a space. Because we're going to run our classrooms at capacity, which is 20 students, so, we get as many children in as we can with these new sets of rules.
The biggest challenge that we have is that the Maryland State Department of Education, who is responsible for the writing of this and all the rules that we make sure that we follow, they are supposed to have, built by now, a sliding scale for anybody who is over income.
Right.
So, if you're 350, this is what you would pay, 400, this is, and unfortunately, that work hasn't been.
It's about two years out.
Done. So, as of right now, anybody that we accept above income, Saint Mary's County Public Schools will receive no revenue from the state, the local, federal, nothing. So, that's the challenge. We want to make sure that we're providing services for children, but the challenge that we have is the Maryland State Department of Education wrote this very specifically, when they say universal full-day Pre-K, au contraire for income-eligible students. But we'll look forward to, we'll continue to work with them, we will hopefully see a sliding scale adopted and implemented and published.
Yep.
So that we can start using that for everybody, so they could, they can have a service at a certain cost, but we have to wait on Maryland State Department of Education to do that work.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. So, when will these students start?
You approve it tonight.
Well, okay, so they haven't started already, they have to wait until.
We haven't, so, all grants.
Okay.
So, once, so this is why, when Dr. Hall says, beat the clock, so, this, the grant was rumored, and we were waiting, and Dr. Hall was waiting with her staff for it to actually release, so as soon as it releases, then they can jump on it, pounce it apart, figure out all the things, they have to gather all the material, all the information, compose, get it all together, which was done, basically, in a 24-hour period, and then revised over the weekend, so that it was ready to be submitted. So, from the time it was released, there was a weekend.
Right, we wrote through the weekend.
Wrote through the weekend.
And one day, and then we got it, we got special ed in, I called the principals, we got our fiscal people, and we have a great accountant in Suba Manavan and put it together, and then routed it for Mrs. McCourt to look at, Dr. Montgomery to look at, and Dr. Smith.
And then, so once it was submitted, then, Dr. Hall also continued to.
Stock them.
Politely work with MSD to go, we turned it in, we turned it in, we turned it in, we turned it in, and you said, rolling, you said, rolling, you said, rolling. So, as soon as it was approved, we got that, it has to come before you, it has to be presented, you approve it, then as soon as this is done, assuming you approve it, then we have to go over and make sure that it is on the county commissioner's agenda, because this is now new money, so it's not in the budget, so you have to approve it first, the county commissioners have to approve it, and then, once that's done, then we have to then start spending, advertise, hire, things like this. Chances are, these classrooms won't be up and running until the end of this month, October, probably.
Right, we want to get them in by September 30th.
It would have been really helpful, had MSD-E released this grant, I don't know, in May, that would have been helpful. Or June.
July.
Or July.
Right.
But August, that's.
Fake.
Yeah.
Right. But what we did do, the children that we knew needed a place, if we had spaces at neighboring schools, we worked with transportation to start them there, and the families will then be called if you approve, and if the commissioners approve, and we'll say, do you want to go back to your home school?
If you'd like to go to your home school, there'll be a new space there.
Right, so we wanted to get them in, because, A, it's good for them to start, and B, it generates funding if they're in, but then, we will, most families are going to choose to go back to their home school, we feel pretty confident. And we couldn't do that for everybody, some families, we've just simply said, we're working on a space for you, so, but everybody's been notified.
And keep in mind that next year's funding that we'll receive from the state and the locals is predicated on how many kids we have. is predicated on how many kids we have enrolled and verified September thirtieth this year. So that's why we're...
Beating the clock.
That's why we're beating the clock, trying to get them in, make sure that they're enrolled so that they are seated and, and enrolled in our schools so that they are in that September thirtieth count so that we could then get money for them next year.
So are the rooms ready? All we have to do is...
Um, no, no, because we have to have your approval. We've identified a room. Once we get there, we know exactly what we're gonna order. So once we have the approval, we'll push the button. We, we are always looking for teachers, so we feel pretty confident we'll be able to identify teachers and paraeducators that can come in for that role. And we have those T M students that graduated that have already passed a para-pro and will meet the credentialing exactly, and maybe wanna be a teacher in the future. Um, so we think we can get it staffed, so we can move very quickly and, um, get them started. If we can get the approvals, then we'll move lightning fast. And, you know, everybody already has their set job of, of what they're gonna do. Soon as we get approvals, Sarah will put the materials and supplies in. Um, as soon as we, you know, we'll immediately start the staffing process and go as quickly as we can. You know, Mrs. Woodley will get back on the phone, and we will start getting kids back to their home school and then opening spaces and continuing to screen all these applications.
Mrs. McCourt doesn't let me spend any money that we don't have. She waits till she's approved by you, approved by the commissioners, and then we can spend it. But she never lets me spend it ahead of time.
Is that how much the grant is?
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand. Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, again.
So, uh, so these will all go on as grant positions? Like, the...
They will roll to the blueprint.
Okay. So here's my, and I didn't, I just thought of this one. So Lexington Park, that's one of our blueprint schools, correct?
Right.
So if we have a s- master teacher, whatever, that applies...
National Board Certified Teacher.
Thank you, yes. Um, can the, does this grant allow us to pay them the premium out of it as well?
We, we would have to pay them.
No, no, I understand that, but I mean, but it, it doesn't matter. It's any teacher that's in that, in that, in that pin or whatever it is. Okay. Okay.
So if you are a, if you are a fantastic nationally board certified early education, uh, teacher, wow, you could, it could really be worth your while to apply with St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Right. Well, great, that, well, that's why, that's what I'm saying, 'cause now we have openings at Lexington Park that is a blueprint school that you're eligible for that additional funding.
That'd be great.
We, we could, we could braid some funds to make that happen.
Okay, that, that's my question, 'cause I mean, I'm assuming that the six hundred is, is spent to the penny, so...
It is.
If we did have someone, we would be able to come up with the money.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. See, thinking ahead.
But if you have a name.
But if you, but again, if you know, if you know somebody, that's really helpful. We will reach out.
And tell only me.
Yeah, don't say it out loud now.
Yeah, so she can beat the clock.
Yeah.
So, all right, Mary, turn it in.
Okay, I wanna thank you again, 'cause you always do. You are very resourceful than the team that you work with in order to seek out competitive grants from MSD. You found out about it. You work twenty-four-seven to get it done. You're waiting for our approval, county commissioner's approval, and you're ready to move forward, and we will have that number by September the thirtieth.
Yep.
Which will be perfect. So thank you for all that you do. Uh, Mrs. Woodley, I know she is right there, joined with you to make it, she is, to make it happen.
She is.
I look forward to it, and I know the parents will be really pleased that there is additional funding, that we could get more kids into the program. 'Cause in the end, it's gonna help kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm grateful that the grant recognizes that just as, um, prior to the blueprint, um, we were allowed to serve students with disabilities and students who are English language learners and homeless. And, um, when the blueprint was written, um, those students were no longer served. And, um, I, I think it's, I, and for, I think it's a travesty because those are some of our neediest students. And the ones who can, um, significantly benefit by, um, being exposed to quality, full-day, early childhood education. Um, so thank you very much for, um, staying on top of things, for making sure that, um, you and your team were prepared to, um, to, uh, to jump on it as quickly as possible. And, um, uh, you are very tenacious. I've known that for a long time. So thank you. Um, it, it's...
My pleasure.
It is, uh, it's gonna be to the benefit of our students, um, throughout. So thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved and acceptance of this grant and applicable budget in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars and submittal of this budget increase to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval.
Do I have a second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion is carried. All right, thank you, Dr. Hall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have two informational items tonight. The first one seems to be more fun than the second one. Back to school. No offense, Ms. Bachner. See, it's a challenge. You have to make it fun now.
Good evening. Yeah, that's why I have a lot to live up to. Um, actually, it was very exciting, 'cause every year, uh, we have the opportunity to share with you the, the great enthusiasm of opening our schools. And as Dr. Smith already shared, you saw that enthusiasm, you saw that excitement. Um, and there was a real, um, there was a real good vibe in schools on that first day. I don't know another way to describe it, but there was a real enthusiasm across the system. And I think we've seen that, um, go on for, for this last week as well. It doesn't happen by accident. There's a lot of preparation that is done behind the scenes and in front of the scenes to make it all happen. So I just wanna highlight a few of those, but this doesn't nearly capture all of the work that's done by all of the divisions within Supporting Services and Instruction and Human Resources and Finance to get everything ready, as well as what happens in every one of our school buildings. So we'll start by looking at just a few things here. These are just a hu- few highlights from, um, Maintenance and Operations. Particularly, you see a new, uh, gym floor at Chopticon. You've got new paving in some parking lots and new carpeting and tennis courts, as well as, uh, a lot of work that's done to prepare our, our hallways and classrooms, and including, uh, the, the build-out of new, um, security vestibules in our schools as well. And that's done by great people. Um, and so particularly, you've got a few of our building service workers here who, who clean every surface and every item in a, in a classroom to get it ready for the school year. And, and just the work that, that is done, uh, by that team over the summer is, is just incredible. We, we see this, we, we've drive-by mechanics bill every time you come into the county, and you see a beautiful new face on that school, as well as each element within the building. Um, and I know that, uh, Ms. Bailey and, and Dr. Smith, you saw it on that first day and sat in those chairs in that media center as well. But just, it's, it's a highlight of, of a tremendous amount of work over the last couple of years to make that building ready, um, and re-invigorated at that, for that school and that school community. Um, we look at the, the folks in transportation and what it takes to prepare. So you've got training that happens for them, you have inspections, you have running the bu- bus routes. And just a little plug to remind parents that you can, can watch where things are.
Here comes the bus.
Here comes the bus app.
Yep.
Uh, you can take a look at that. If you still have questions about your bus route, you can go online and you can plug in your address and get all that information as well. Our food service folks, again, professional development for them, getting ready for the school year. And a little pla- another plug for parents, if you haven't filled out your meal application, just a reminder that that is done every single year. So I know you did it last year. We, we've gotta do it again this year too, so be sure that you complete those forms. And then, of course, uh, as they go through the line, they see the smiling faces of our food service workers. And as Dr. Smith, uh, mentioned in his opening remarks, we could also use a few more. So if anybody's interested in, in working in that realm, um, please apply. The technology, we have a one-to-one system. Every student has a laptop, every, uh, employee has a laptop or an iPad. Uh, and that takes a lot of work behind the scenes from the, uh, folks in instructional technology and information technology to get those devices ready and issued. And then, of course, we know students, when they change levels, they've gotta trade them out. So all that has to be redone as well. So there's a, just a great amount of work there. And speaking of a lot of work, let's talk about what Human Resources has done to get the, the, uh, school year started with about two-hundred-and-fifty hires done, uh, over the summer. That's about, half of those are instructional positions and half are support sys- uh, employees. And then there's also a whole group of, of, uh, folks who were hired mid-year last year who have, uh, who have continued this year, and, and they, they had to have additional training over the summer as well. So we talked about the professional development for each one of those groups. But last time we, you met, you talked a little bit about new teacher orientation, and you all got to see the, them on that first day there. But as schools were ready to open, there was school-based staff development. There was department and content professional development that happened that week, as well as all the work that's done with our students and parents in open houses to prepare the school year. And, uh, student-to-student groups that help our incoming freshmen or incoming students to a building and the, just... So, so all of this is to get ready for that new school year. And we do have a few new faces. We have nine new, uh, leaders of schools this year. Uh, a couple of them, uh, Ms. Martin and Mr. Serbiak were brought in as acting last year and, and are on, uh, fully appointed this year. And we've got, uh, some familiar faces that made their way to new schools this year. Um, and we have two new faces that you see up here, Ms. Zire and Mr. Schiefer. Uh, Mr. Schiefer, uh, was a teacher with us, and then, uh, after some, uh, service administratively in other districts, came back, had to serve as a principal. So we're glad to see them, and I know our students are glad to see those smiling faces every day as they're welcomed off the buses too. And then we had the first day, exciting in, uh, day, that first day, with seventeen-thousand-five-hundred or so students walking through the door and getting off of buses into our school. And you can see in their faces just the enthusiasm for this school year too. And again, that doesn't happen by accident. There's a lot of preparation by each one of those teachers or paraeducators that are working within the classroom as well. And Ms. Al, Ms. Allen, you're smiling and nodding, 'cause I know you see that person in the, the bottom-left corner. That's Ms. Orthner, who is at Leonardtown Middle School, and you see on the tables there, Mr. Potato Head. Um, she had an exciting activity that really engaged kids on the first day of school. And this is, uh, Leonardtown Middle School, uh, very early in the morning. Um, and she had a potato farm where the pieces of Mr. Potato Head were all laid about. And students worked in teams to go through the getting to know their classroom activities. Did you log into Schoology? Did you find this resource in the classroom? And as they did each piece, they got a piece of Mr. Potato Head. So what they're showing off there is their proud work. Um, and it was just a very creative way to get kids engaged on that very first day. So Lily, you talk about connected. This is a perfect example of what that looks like.
They are excited to learn.
They are excited to learn as well, too.
Pieces of the Mr. Potato Head.
All right. It was, uh, you know, but that's, that's the kind of creativity we see in our classrooms every day, um, and just the talent and, and expertise of our teachers. So, um, parents, if you have questions, there's a great Students and Families tab on the website. It goes to a page that has everything with, the very thi- first thing at the top is your Schoology login. So you can stay tuned and keep an eye on what your students are working on and sort of track their progress. And also through Schoology, there's messages that are sent out to families as well, so stay tuned there. And then we also encourage parents to stay tuned to the, uh, to your, your school's smores or other newsletters. And on the website, if you go to their school's webpage, there's also a page that links right to their news. So if you missed last n- newsletter, you can find an archived version of it there as well. So with that, um, this is gonna be a great school year. Thank you all for your support and encouragement of our students and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just to, everybody did an incredible job, but, but particularly on the first day, thank you to our bus drivers. I mean, they picked up, they, they practiced their routes. The routes were, were well-developed. Jeff Thompson and the whole suite of professionals over in Transportation, they did an amazing job. And most importantly, they got them all home at the end of the day. Um, we're the only, I think the only ones that, we only had a couple of secondary kids that got on the wrong bus or whatever. All of our little, all of our little people, right bus, right bus home. And that's always, the, the worst-case scenario is when you have a, you know, a little, a little person that doesn't make it to the, the bus drop where they're supposed to be. And we talked about it when we were getting ready with the transportation, said, "Please, thank you," and boy, they stepped up. As you've heard from other counties, that is, that is, that is a great challenge. And, um, we just got, just incredible people driving our buses. They're just, they're just fabulous.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Bachner in.
Ms. Burr.
Knock my socks off.
We are going to knock your socks off.
Okay.
Have a video.
Yay!
Well, there will be the dancing portion, right? The singing and the...
I wish I had a Mr. Potato Head.
I know. That is, that is a first-year teacher, first teacher, first year here with us, right?
And as you got a piece of data, you put a potato piece.
Exactly.
And, and I will tell you, those kids, eight o'clock in the morning, they were awake, alert, and engaged. It was fantastic.
'Cause we, 'cause originally our E was engaged, and then that was Lily, and came back with us and said, "Well, what does engage, what does it mean? It's excited. It look, we should just say excited."
Gotta get it right.
Spot on.
Well, Ms. Burr and I are here tonight to share with you the spring results from the twenty-two, twenty-three Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, which you all know and love as M cap, that we have been talking about. Um, we've broken up the presentation a little bit. I'll be doing the instructional pieces and like, what are we going to do in response to, um, the data that we're seeing? And Ms. Burr, um, in her job as supervisor of assessments, will share with you the data itself. Um, but we entertain questions along the way as you have them. So just to let you know that the data we're sharing with you, um, has been provided to us by MSD. Um, and at this time, specific school-level data is still embargoed by MSD. So we can't share that. However, and we'll share a timeline with you at the end of the presentation. We'll share with you when that is expected to be published to the public, which we've been told is in September on their website, um, and in a state board meeting. So we will keep you posted on that. Um, and all percentages, just for ease, have been, been rounded for the, for this presentation. So, um, great questions from the board. They're a little bit more descriptions, so we have added those. Um, this MS, M cap and all the data we're sharing, it's voluminous. It's, it's, there's so much data that we could present. So if you need more, just ask, and we can get that. But this is really just that high level, including those data that we can share with you. But we wanted to share with you what it means to have a four, a three, a two, a one, 'cause we're gonna talk a lot about those proficiency levels or performance levels. So right there are, there's four levels now, and it's, it's shifted every year from five to four to three to, to different... We're at four right now. Four is distinguished, three is proficient, two is developing, and one is a beginning learner. And we are looking tonight, when we talk about proficiency, we're talking about those students who attain levels three and level four. Uh, and what, we're gonna also talk about what the scores make up of those proficiency levels. Um, so we highlighted three and four, because again, that's what we're talking about tonight, the proficiency for any test, ELA, mathematics, MISA. Seven-fifty is that, that score point or above that makes you a proficient learner, um, and anything under. And it is to be noted that although the beginning, the developing, and the proficient, um, scale scores are all the same band, the distinguished are, they're varied a little bit by assessment, so we can get you those if you want. But there are a point here and a point there. So, um, for example, a distinguished may be seven-eighty-nine to eight-fifty for one assessment and seven-ninety to eight-fifty for another. Someone let Tammy take over.
Okay, we start out, MSD releases their information in, uh, three-to-eight score bands and then for high school. Uh, so we're gonna look at exactly what was presented by MSD for those. And then we have some other slides that break it down even more for our county into elementary, middle, and high school. So as we move on, we'll get a little more detail. Um, our county is, got a fifty-three percent proficiency rating overall in the grade band of three through eight, uh, for ELA assessments. And as you look down the color gradient there to the right side of the slide, the darker the color, the higher level of proficiency. So overall, the state, in the state, forty-seven percent of the students in grades three through eight were deemed proficient in ELA. Our county had fifty-three percent. So we're fairly happy with how we sat, you know, can always improve, but that, that was fairly good. And then moving on to ELA-ten, which is now used for college and career readiness assessment. Um, that's the CCR requirement, is the ELA-ten score. Uh, overall, in the state, uh, English-ten test, uh, was fifty-four percent proficiency. But St. Mary's County was sixty-five percent proficiency for ELA-ten. Again, we're happy that we are in a darker shade of blue on that map. They also talk about approve, improvements across the state. So what we're showing you here is what I alluded to earlier. We went and broke it down, not just three to eight, but we took our elementary, our middle, and our high school. And the middle column there is where we were in school year twenty-two, our percent... And the middle column there is where we were in school year twenty-two, our percent proficient versus, in parentheses, you see the state percent proficient. And then where we were in SY twenty-three, our percent versus the state percent. We are happy to be able to report that we increased proficiency at every level. And also at every level, we were higher than the state average for proficiency.
It's also to be noted, if I'm going to interject here a little bit, that in past for presentations to the board, sometimes we went back many years and shared proficiency. And we didn't do that as much this time because this is a different assessment that was given. And the last time we had assessment data to you in eighteen and nineteen, that was Park Assessments. So even though we could share that trend data and we absolutely go back and look at it because it does assess the same standards, just in different ways, a little bit especially with MISA, that's why we didn't go back and show you eight, nine years of data.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
So, and I'm just throwing, I don't expect an answer because it's not really yours to answer. But when, when MSD releases, when they lump it in on that one graph, from this graph, from three until eight, I mean, all they've done is they've just averaged the three through five and the six through eight, right?
Yeah.
To me, the content of what your ELA class is in third, fourth, and fifth grade is vastly different than what it is in sixth, seventh, and eighth. So it's somewhat misleading for them to lump five years of education altogether when if I see what a third grader is doing and I look at what a seventh or eighth grader is doing, the disparity is huge.
Exactly. And then when you see the, the ELA-ten data, it's just one grade level.
Right.
By itself. So that's why we break it down by, by grade band.
So maybe with all of their analytics, they should break it down into something that is actually usable rather than lumping it all together.
I think that ultimately, they're just looking, I mean, that's a nice graphic, right?
But it's incredibly misleading.
And you, and the graphic, you can, you can see where each county is, you can feel good or bad about yourself. And that's really what this is. The MSD first presentation is really to say, here's the data and then rank all the systems. And so this is a, you know, they just...
There's, there's no, I don't need to explain.
Oh, I, oh, no, no, no. It's just, it's a great, it's, they've been, they've been using this graphic.
Better if I see, if I saw St. Mary's County, ELA, grade six through eight is fifty-six percent rather than sitting here at fifty-three percent overall.
Yes.
That would make, that would bring me more joy.
Well, and that's why we did this breakdown for you by three through five.
And I greatly appreciate that because...
We want to, we want to get you to your joy.
Right, because, exactly. Well, because you can, you can make, you can make up percentages, you can make percentages, tell the story that you want to tell. Does not necessarily have to be the accurate story.
And again, as, as, as...
Right, Dr. Jaffers?
And as Mrs. Bachner goes back to emphasize, we don't have trend data for these assessments because these are brand-new assessments that were developed by, by the previous administration
Right.
of the Maryland State Department of Education.
Right.
And finalized during the pandemic.
Right.
So as we, ELA scores, I think there's, there's, there is some joy to be had there. We're going to go into math.
No, I, no, there, there's...
But there, to Mrs. Bailey's point, there's great joy in some of that that's not shown at all in these slides, the way they're done.
So, you know, I mean, if, I don't know, like, let's say from Allegheny County, I mean, I'm fifty-one percent. Does that mean that, you know, someone is, you know, thirty-something, another one's sixty? I don't know, right?
It's, again, the graphic is a nice graphic.
Has pretty colors.
And we, and we started this when we were doing all the COVID numbers and stuff.
I know, I know, I know.
Giving us the state of Maryland, you could see where...
It's bothered me for years, so I just felt I'd get it out of my system.
We wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that we were using the state's graphics because that, you know, we, we're going to be in the public. They're going to, the public is never going to necessarily, outside of education related to your own child and perhaps your child's school, they're never going to do a deep dive. They're going to want to see on a chart where they rank back and forth and where that all is.
Right, I understand.
Now, the more specific data, however, will come out on MD Report Card. They're telling us sometime next month.
Right.
So while they've only released this for the time being, they do have more specific school data. We're just prohibited from sharing it publicly at this time.
No, I understand. I'm just making the statement that it is somewhat misleading
Three through eight.
lumping five years of schooling together from primary literally to secondary.
Yes.
Okay, I'm done.
Well, and then we're going to move on to math and look at it again. The state's data is from three through eight. And the percentages are a lot lower than they are in ELA, but that is not a SMCPS issue. That is a statewide trend. So if you look at three-through-eight math across the state, it is twenty-five percent proficient. St. Mary's County is thirty-three percent proficient. So again, you know, we love seeing our county in the darker shade of blue there.
But again, to go to Ms. Bailey's point, that's where it would have been really nice to, for us to have a slide that showed you six through eight because when you do put six through eight against the state data, we are actually second in the state right now for grade six through eight mathematics. Not where we want to be, but that is a great feat for us to... And if you remember, last year, we were at spaces, or rankings, two, two, and I think five for mathematics. And so we're holding that because it's easy to get it one year, but it's really hard to hold on to it. So we're very, very proud of that six-through-eight ranking as second in the state.
And something else to keep in mind across, for math in particular, and it's grades three through eight and Algebra I, the delivery of the test was adjusted for twenty-three. And it was a must, it's a modified computer adaptive test. So it's not what a psychometrician would understand as a completely computer adaptive test because it's still timed, it's still administered in blocks, but it's must-answer-to-continue and computer adaptive. So while it's the same kind of test with what we started for the first time in twenty-two, the administration style of the test was different. And it's something that students aren't really accustomed to. So there's a learning curve in the administration style of the test.
So I look at it like this. So you give somebody a ten-person, a ten-question test in a quiet room in a perfect setting with the temperature controlled and, and the light just right. And then you compare it to giving somebody an assessment in the middle of the Beltway with traffic whizzing by. And then you go, these scores went down.
Right.
Sooner or later, somebody's going to have to say, stop. Let's just go back to paper and pencil. Because the only reason why we're doing all of this stuff was because with the advent of computer technology and AI, chat, whatever, 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 we were going to get instantaneous scores back. And we would know exactly where children are, it would almost be formative. And now, we're talking in September, you'll be now finding out how they did in May. And that's after the school year started, that's after we're, we're down a path. And very soon, the, the tenth grade, ELA-ten, the algebra assessment, and what else is going to count for the, and end of course, it's going to be part of their grade.
And that's biology and government.
And biology and government, yeah. So...
I have a question on that, actually. I didn't want to interrupt, but I have a question because as I understand it, that's the new thing. I listened to Mona's stuff when she came to our school and told us all about it. But I know that as a state, of course, we're seeing a decline in that. But is there, have we like established a uniform way of incorporating those? Like what will the value of the score be to their end-of-course grades? Because...
One-fifth?
Was it one, one-fifth?
It's twenty percent.
Twenty percent. By state mandate, it's twenty percent of their overall grade.
And it start, didn't, it starts with what, the class of...
Incoming freshman this year.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-seven right now.
I know that is, like, if I may be so bold, it's not a popular decision for us. Like, we're not super excited about that. But, yeah.
Well, especially if the mechanics don't work, that you don't have the score back instantly, so yeah.
You won't find it out for a long time. And I mean, if, we're at an all-time, like, not an all-time low, but we're pretty low right now across the state just because of the pandemic. So I feel like that is just pretty, pretty rough.
Well, but, I mean, going to the, going, this, this timeline for their embargoing and releasing of data didn't change, right? I mean, it's still the same, it's still the same timeline I remember when we did it by paper and pencil, right? Versus now.
When these were hand-scoring.
Right, to the whole argument of like, oh, put tape, put it on a computer and you'll get instantaneous results. We're still now two years behind on planning for any type of help for these kids, right?
When we had paper pencil tests, we had scores for MSA.
Right.
We had scores back in the summer.
Correct.
Because Dr. Hall and I in the early two thousand, whatever that was, we'd, we'd be able to figure out all of this stuff so that when the administrators came back in early August, we were talking about and were able to share with and discuss their data from the previous year so that they could then make, you know, scheduling decisions for students.
Right, but now they already have another, they have a whole marketing period under their belt.
Yeah, basically.
Okay, I'm sorry, we keep interrupting you.
So, the, oh, wait.
I got one question for you. Did I hear that you couldn't go on if you couldn't answer something you had to answer before you got the...
Correct.
Yes.
For math this year.
For math.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Wow.
And there is discussion that that may be happening for ELA in the near future. I, I do not know that for certain, but it is being discussed at the state level.
Well, that, that's probably coming from higher education because that's what, that's what happens on your...
That's the Accuplacer. And that was a great revenue generator for all higher ed so that they could put kids in non-credit courses and charge them full tuition. I don't know how we're going to get more money out of this, but I'm sure somebody's figured out a way to monetize it.
Sure.
Thank you.
All that said, let's talk about the math scores.
Well, and algebra is our next math score. Proficiency statewide was at seventeen percent. At St. Mary's County, we are slightly above that at twenty percent proficiency for our Algebra I. We are going to talk in a few minutes, though, about even how that number is a little misleading because of the way the cut scores versus raw scores are calculated. So if we look at how we've done the last two years since we've had this test, and like I said, keeping in mind that the twenty-two test was brand-new, the twenty-three test was the same somewhat, but a different administration style, I think we can all be proud of the fact that we have made increases at the elementary, middle, and high school level. They're not great jumps, but we are steadily improving and we are outpacing the state. Grade five science assessment, this one is also, we have increased, they point out on their slides, like, from the state that twenty-two LEAs improved their performance from twenty-two to twenty-three. We are, again, one of the school systems who improved our performance. And we had a forty-four percent, forty-four point five. They put a decimal on that one. And the state proficiency was thirty-four point five.
Stem for all.
And there we see how we were in twenty-two versus twenty-three. This, this test has been a little more stable across the last couple of years than some of the tests are. But it is new in that it is now using the integrated science assessment standards. So while it's somewhat more similar to the students than other tests, it too has been tweaked so that the first year we really had this kind of testing was in twenty-two. And we see improvements at the fifth grade level and the eighth grade level went down. And that's not just us. We're going to break down on the next slide, eighth grade, but I wanted to address it since we have this up here now. We were forty-nine percent proficient in twenty-two and thirty-seven percent proficient in twenty-three. And that is a trend across the state. If you went back to pre-pandemic and we had, in twenty-nineteen, it was across the state a thirty-eight percent proficiency. So it has continually decreased. But these are the students. The eighth grade science assessment is a comprehensive assessment that covers six, seven, and eight. So we're still seeing the impacts of those COVID years when students weren't in school and when they were hybrid and going through lots of changes in instruction. So while no one's really pleased with it, there is an understanding of how and why it happened because this is a, eighth grade is a comprehensive assessment. And those students missed years in there. And so that's why we think we're seeing the decrease in eighth grade.
We will know for sure when we start desegregating by standard on Performance Matters. And everything was just loaded into Performance Matters on Monday. Not in the exact way we want it to be, but enough that we can start looking at standards. And then we'll be able to dig a little bit more into eighth grade and see why also the changes, were they by standard? And kind of re-align, realign if we need to curriculum pacing guides, things like that.
And this is just the slide for eighth grade. Like I said, we wanted to speak about it first because we knew eighth grade is the only place we decreased, but we, the entire state decreased. The state proficiency rating for grade eight science was a little over twenty-six percent. And St. Mary's is over thirty percent. So we're still outpacing the state, but we also saw that decrease.
It's also to be noted that the eighth graders also took a social studies assessment, but they're standard-setting, so we won't get those for even longer. So we haven't been able to share those yet.
So we did want to share, and this was part of what the state talked about a little bit, cusp. It's the first time we've used the word cusp. But what would happen if that grade band, remember I showed you the proficiency level was seven fifty to be proficient? If that grade band even went down five points to seven forty-five, how would it impact our scores? And this graph shows it beautifully. If you would lower that score, that grade band or that proficiency band to seven forty-five, our grades three through eight on, yeah, English would go from fifty-three percent proficiency to sixty-two percent proficiency. A tenth grade would go to, from sixty-five to seventy-six. And then in math, grades three through eight would go thirty-three to forty-one. And algebra would go to two, twenty to thirty. And that's one to three questions. That's the difference between them.
Are all questions, are all the questions weighted the same?
No.
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 Does the counter, like, the computer reactive programming change that? Like, if you answer correctly and it takes you to a higher level question, do you get a higher weight on that?
Yes.
Seems a little...
Yeah, so, so when you have, when you have a computer adaptive test that stops you on your progress towards the greater valued questions, your scores are lower. And everybody seems to be surprised.
The gates are shut. You just can't get past that.
Yeah. You know, this is, this is, we spent a decade arguing with institutes of higher ed about the ridiculous way in which Accuplacer was precluding kids from going into credit-bearing college courses. And universally, higher ed said, Accuplacer works. And universally, everybody who actually was subjected to it said, it is not an assessment of how are, how, how I actually am doing and what I know. Moreover, our data from the kids that we could get back from, say, the College of Southern Maryland, grades that they had earned in classes and a transcript review was a much better indicator as to whether or not they earned credit at a college level than Accuplacer. So eventually, we've gotten to a point where we've kind of thrown it out. It's interesting that the Maryland State Department of Education, working with the college board, did this. And, and again, this isn't a St. Mary's County problem. If, if we designed a test and twenty percent of our kids passed it, I wouldn't blame the kids. I wouldn't blame the teachers. I would blame the person who made the test because that's where the problem lies.
Disconnect.
Yeah.
An absolute disconnect.
And I think the Maryland State Department of Education, probably, you know, with, with, with Mr. Chowdhury, Superintendent Chowdhury, has a lot of work to be done to explain this. And, and for his part, he does get to say, this isn't my test. I didn't design it, I didn't implement it, I didn't work with the vendors, I didn't choose the platform. All the items were already locked and loaded. I wasn't in charge of the field testing, any of that. He's inheriting it. We'll see what he does with it.
So if, all right, so then, does every child not have the same
No.
series of questions?
No.
But yet, we are then grading them or...
Evaluating their progress.
Thank you, yes, evaluating them based on a set of questions that changes for every single child.
There's an item bank. And all of the, all of the tests, even if it weren't computer adaptive, there's no guarantee that every student has the same question. And we do have some analysis tools that show us, they don't tell us what the questions are because they don't release the questions. But it'll say question and it'll give us the code number. Let's say it's question one. This is how many students had question one. So we can see that not all of our students had the same questions. And there are some questions, there were reports that rank questions in order of difficulty. And we can see that, you know, students were more successful on some questions than other questions. Sometimes they did really well on difficult questions. Sometimes the most difficult questions have the lowest correct answer rate, which is to be expected. But that is somewhat randomized by student and it is somewhat determined by this must-answer-to- But that is somewhat randomized by student, and it is somewhat determined by this must-answer-to-continue, where based on your answer to a previous question, it's like the old choose-your-own-adventure books, you know, where whatever you pick here determines what you get there.
That is the best analogy I've heard yet.
So there, so there's five questions on, I don't know, variables, right? And, or, let's say there's ten questions, but you have to answer, you know, there's, that's the bank, and then there's five questions. So I could have one child that could get five questions that are, I don't know, less difficult, and then I could have one that has a mixture, and then I could have one that, based on their prior answers, has the most difficult questions, which eventually then is pulling down their proficiency score, correct?
They tell us the psychometricians have a formula for that. I, I don't pretend to understand how that formula works, but we have raised, um, the, the LAC in every county, we meet every other week, uh, with the state board, and we have raised that question over and over again, and they keep promising us that they are going to get us a guide that will explain that at the layperson's level.
I don't even want a guide, I just want the same, I want this, I want every kid to take, across the whole state, to take the same questions, right? To take, to take the same, the same twenty-question test, or fifty-question test, or whatever, because otherwise, how, how, I mean, I, I, then you throw it up here, and I'm not yelling at you, but then you throw it up here, right?
But we've.
And, and then you, you, you rank all these counties.
We've been arguing this, the, yeah.
It's, it's meaningless.
Yeah.
And, and their decisions about cut scores were completely arbitrary, completely arbitrary.
Yeah.
You don't have a standardized test.
No.
Yeah. It alienates students.
You don't have a standardized test.
They say that they do, but they really don't.
By some program.
It's a bait and switch.
It alienates students of different, um, achievement levels, and personally, as a student who's kind of like been here on, like, the cusp of whether or not we were taking a standardized test on paper, like the SAT versus things on the computer, I can say that, like, the, the student testing psyche is so fragile, and even just being on a computer alone, whether or not it's computer reactive or not, um, like, that the computer alone totally robs you of any testing strategies that you might have had, let you learn on paper through most of your childhood. So it's, it's being thrown in entirely different, um, you know, like, ball pit when you go in there. And I just, it's, it's really not conducive to increasing our testing scores if you keep changing it. I know in the AP program, they're going to try to change it to computer, and that, like, all the kids who have been practicing on paper, the teachers put all the tests on paper for this reason, it's no longer going to be like that, so you're a little out of sorts.
Yeah.
And if you, you know, you can't progress, um, until you answer the question, um, and, and you keep hitting roadblocks, what do you do? You, a lot of kids just go.
Well, you get relegated answering the same, the same level question, which has a diff-, has a differentiated, lower value. The whole, I, the, the, I know that we're, we're, we're way down on the weeds in this. I, I will tell you that the message that I, I want to give to all teachers is, they're doing a great job. We are, we are outperforming the state on every level. And we are in the top ten, pretty much, for any metric that we have, and s-, at some levels, in the top five, top two, which is amazing, because we are near the bottom at per pupil funding.
So. Worcester County, at least seven thousand dollars a student more than we are, at least?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I mean, that's, yeah, that, you know, so, but that.
Don't get discouraged that the proficiency level is so low, because it's, the, the cards are stacked against you. That's, that's the other message to take away.
It's just, and, and AP is a paper pencil test.
For now.
Because it's a, it, and it is the, it is, and PSAT and SAT, these are some of the best assessments that are provided, and the data that comes back consistently, and you can look back longitudinally, and you can really, up until the re-, the revision, after, that's great data. And so the way that's done is it's a paper pencil test, and after it's done, everybody takes it and gets scored, and then they actually release the items.
Very quickly.
So you can see
It's like two days later.
the actual items, so you can actually see what you were asked, and, and if you did make a mistake, you can understand your error, error pattern, and you can improve. MSDE, by not releasing the items, by not, by giving you a scale score that isn't, doesn't equate down, to not be, so if, if a classroom teacher gives a test, after that test is, you go over it question by question with your kids, and you talk about why they answered, what they answered, what the, and that helps people learn. Um, and, uh, you know, here, here we are, we're, we, we'll do as mu-, we, with the data that we're given, we'll do the most work that we possibly can to help our kids, but please know that this is not the way we run our system. This is not the way we assess student learning, this is not the way we determine whether or not kids are mastering standards, uh, across the grades.
And it's neither effective or efficient, needs to be trash.
Well, maybe, maybe MSD needs to do a little bit more explaining on their little graphics about how the test is actually.
The next level is the, is the more detailed dive, and, and we'll see, and, and I think that they are seeking the input from actual students, finally, about, about what the testing platform, which, which is, I would think, what you should be doing.
MSD is also releasing a longitudinal study, that is part of actually, I don't say, shouldn't say MSD, it's not, it's the AIV part of Blueprint, is releasing a longitudinal study to look at what is the best measure of CCR, and they are looking at grade point average. Um, is a three-point-a-grade point average a better predictor of college success than MCAP scores? So very anxious to see that, that should be released, um, in September, from an independent company that the AIV, um, part of Blueprint did.
That would be very interesting.
And not to get too far off topic, but SAT and PSAT are going all digital this year.
That's the one I was thinking of, like, I know they're making the change.
Well, and, and the, and the best part will be, we'll be able to look at last year's data and this year's data. And last year's data was pandemic recovery data, and when they go all digital, if the scores go down, I, I, I think that the entire nation needs to say, we're going to, you either offer us, we're going to have to have an option.
It's the pitfall of the advent of technology, it really is, because it's so discombobulating.
Yeah, it's not, I mean.
When you go to college, everything is exactly as we described. You lock down your browser, and you can't move to the next question until you answer the first one, and everything is, is on a computer.
Higher ed's killing it, so, their enrollment's upright, and they're, and we have, I mean, they're doing a great, they're doing a great job.
All right, next steps, what do we have?
So what are we going to do instructional, because that's the big, the big question, you know, we have data, but what are we doing about it? So, all the content supervisors have already started digging deep, as I said, everything by standard levels in Performance Matters as of Monday, so that's our next lift, but right now, um, they've started to look at the various reports, breaking down by school, even though it's embargoed, we can have discussions with principals about their school report and their levels, including down to the demographics, how did certain subgroups do, how did each grade level do, even to how did this classroom teacher do? So that's what we're working on now. Um, and we need to target the cusp kids, if we have that data that shows what our kids would do with one to three more questions, we need to think about, how can we do that? So things like spiral reviews, instead of warm-ups, where we actually, you know, give them warm-ups where they spiral review the content, we know that that has been a big success, and the other thing is really taking a look at when we give the algebra assessment in the assessment window, um, you know, to see if that makes any difference, um, for that. Um, and then, um, we're also taking the data that we did get from MCAP and comparing it to our required assessment data that we give kids in-house, to see, are they similar, are they different, especially, particularly with those standard data that we, we were able to get. In other words, how do they do it, do on a specific standard on MCAP versus the standard when we gave it as part of our required assessment? Um, and then, um, as I, as I said, we're going to go to the content standards, and all of the data is to be used a- as part of a school's school improvement plan that is due, um, to Dr. Marr on September thirtieth. The other thing we want you just to know, um, is, uh, the reason we didn't come before you with the MCAP Government and Life Science MISA, even though we've had it a long time before now, um, is that it's still embargoed by MSD, so we weren't allowed to share that with you. Um, but individual score reports are planning to go out to include government, actually, government MISA's already out, am I right? So the score reports have already been out to the parents, but we're not.
Well, they're in the process.
They're in the process of going out. Um, so we're thinking that the students will actually have their individual student reports before we're allowed to share the data, that has happened before, so that's nothing new. Um, but they're supposed to be, um, to September fifteenth for distribution. So parents, just be aware that they're going to come to you, and you'll get an individual student report about how your child did. Um, and then we just wanted to have these dates on September twenty-sixth. That's when they have shared with us that they hope to have all of those little nitty-gritty pieces of MCAP data by school, um, and demographics uploaded to mdreportcard.org, we provided the link, so everybody would have that, that's a public site. Um, and then December, we get our accountability data, that's when they take all the MCAP data plus other measures and give us our report card ratings, you've seen those before, the star ratings, and things like that.
That's what you get to find if we're one, two, three, four, five stars.
So we've had questions, but we will entertain any more.
Well, I have no further questions, thank you for, um, putting up with this discussion, um, but you had a great presentation, so thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, but no questions.
Mary?
Thank you. I think everybody can understand that, um, the, that the board, um, is frustrated with MSDE, um, and sort of tired of hearing the, well, we don't have it yet, you can't have it yet, you can't have it yet. Um, we're required to turn things around, um, I believe MSDE should as well. That's my venting for tonight, thank you for listening.
There would be less frustration if there was an avenue to discuss with the state board, but there doesn't seem to be, so.
Very true.
Not, not the state board, nor the state superintendent.
The poll quote for the newspapers is that St. Mary's County outperformed the state average at all grade levels on all assessments, and ranked consistently in the top ten according to the grade bands that were provided from MSDE. Our teachers are incredible, our supervisors are incredible, and our students, given a very, very challenging testing environment, are rising to the, the challenge.
They are resilient.
They are resilient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a little stickers.
Yes.
Okay, anyone have anything else? All right, the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, September thirteenth, at eight o'clock. With that, we are adjourned.